...and fifteen special meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have the roll call?
Council members Devine, Friedman.
Here.
Garpetyan.
Here.
Sinanian.
Here.
Mayor Najarian.
Here. May we have your report?
The agenda for the August fourth, 2015 special public meeting of the City Council is posted on Thursday, July thirtieth, 2015, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
May we have the closed session item?
For closed session, there are two items. One A is conference with real property negotiators, property location, approximately ninety thousand five hundred square feet of property, generally bounded by Jackson Street on the east, Kenwood Street on the west, Wilson Avenue on the south, and an alley to the north. Negotiators attending closed session are Scott Ochoa, Yasmin Beers, Michael J. Garcia, Gillian Van Miden, Phil Landsfam, Justarren, and Mark Barry. Instructions: The negotiators will concern a price in terms of potential acquisition. One B is a conference with legal counsel, anticipate litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to paragraph four of subdivision D of government code five four nine five six point nine one case.
Thank you. Do you anticipate reporting out on either of those two items?
Mr. Mayor, we do not, and on item one B, we'll be pushing that item out to August eighteenth.
Okay, so item one B will not be considered then. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item two is minutes of the joint City Council and Glendale Economic Development Corporation meeting of July twenty eighth, 2015, and a regular City Council meeting of July twenty eighth, 2015.
Okay, is there a motion for the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and with no objections or corrections, the minutes for both meetings will be approved as submitted. The next item, please.
Next item on the agenda, item three is interim director of community development regarding creative sign proposal for King Taco located at one fifteen East Broadway, case number PR one five one zero seven eight eight. And three A is council motion to approve creative sign.
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir, and may please counsel, we have for you the consideration of the King Taco creative sign, as was read by city clerk. About two years ago, we had engaged in a marketing program to attract King Taco to the downtown and specifically to the arts and entertainment district. As you know, in the context of the downtown specific plan, we have the A and E district on Maryland, running from the Lemley Theater to, on the north, to the, hopefully soon to be renovated as we get under construction, our public library on the south. The two blocks in between are intended by the DSP to be fully functioning entertainment, nightlife, excitement, lights, signage, and action, basically, to populate the later evening hours of our eighteen-hour day. With that, we were successful in attracting King Taco. They are now ready to open as of tomorrow. They have put, moved through the entitlement process, construction process, and at this point, we have for you the final leg in that entitlement, which is the creative sign. With that, I'll have Villia Zemetitis get up and talk about the design studio's consideration of the creative sign.
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa. Council members, as Mr. Ochoa just briefly described the arts and entertainment district, I'm just going to give you a brief overview of the actual creative sign ordinance. The creative sign ordinance was created and adopted concurrent with the creation of the arts and entertainment district in 2012, and it was intended to allow for more artistic signs supportive of the district's vision. Rather than simply increasing the allowed area of signs, which might have resulted in larger, uglier signs, the creative sign criteria allows for applicants to propose signs subject to design guidelines and to be reviewed through a discretionary review process in order to regulate the artistic, graphic, and fabrication quality of those signs. Now, creative signs are identified as permitted by the sign code, and they must meet the three required findings set forth in the designer view board chapter. These findings address the three basic criterias of context, design, and design qual-- I'm sorry, context, design, and design quality. Creative signs are only permitted in the downtown specific plan area and in the CR zones, which are in Montrose, and the City Council is the review authority for all creative signs in the redevelopment area. So with that background said, this brings us to today's item on the agenda. King Taco is a new five thousand one hundred square foot restaurant on the ground floor of an existing two-story building on the northwest corner of Broadway and Maryland Avenue in the downtown specific plan Maryland district in the arts and entertainment district. King Taco is requesting approval of a creative sign to be located on the south elevation facing Broadway, approximately fifty feet west from the corner of the building. I do have just a few graphics, and all of these graphics were part of your staff report. So as you'll notice here on the screen behind you, this is the view looking north towards Broadway elevation, and essentially, you will be seeing this, and again, this is in perpendicular to the Broadway elevation, the King Taco creative sign that is being proposed. The project's second sign, second floor location, bless you, is intended to be seen by traffic heading east and west along Broadway. The sign is a uniquely shaped form, in cartoon form, of the King Taco brand logo. When boxed, the projecting sign is approximately sixty-two inches wide and eighty-four inches tall, so if it was boxed, it would be essentially thirty-six square feet. The proposed creative sign for King Taco has been reviewed by our urban design studio staff, who has determined that the creative sign complies with the three required findings in the Glendale Municipal Code thirty point forty-seven point zero four zero. The first being contextual criteria. The sign is located on an entertainment street frontage identified in the DSP in the arts and entertainment district. The proposed sign also meets the contextual criteria calling forth historical design style in its use of neon detailing and artwork. The second item under the criteria would be the design criteria. The proposed sign is a creative representation of the King Taco logo with its three-dimensional figure of a chef wearing a three-point gold crown and cowboy boots while holding a cleaver. And the last criteria would be the design quality, which speaks to the materials and colors used. In addition to the unusual shape, the sign features neon tubing, which would be the red tubing outlining the shape of the sign and gold tubing within the crown, as well as reflective metal discs in what is supposed to be the butcher's cleaver. So I'm just going to go quickly through. This would be the elevation, actually, on the screen showing the Maryland elevation, and what you will see here would be the outline of the creative sign, and this would be the close-up image of the sign. And again, you'll notice that there is red neon tubing around the cartoon form of the King Taco. There are reflective metal discs in the aluminum hatchet, and obviously, it's a representation of the King Taco logo. The sign appropriately fulfills the objectives of providing a unique design that exhibits a high degree of thoughtfulness, imagination, and inventiveness, while also making a positive visual contribution to its project site and the downtown. The design studio's full review and comments were attached exhibit two to the staff report. The sign is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, right, based on class eleven as an on-premise sign, and staff is recommending approval by City Council to adopt the proposed motion, again, approving the creative sign. That concludes staff's presentation. I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
I have a question. So is this logo exactly the same as the logo in all of their locations? Or is it a little bit different in every?
No, it's their trademark logo. That's their website, their lapel pins, their hats, t-shirts.
So other locations actually have this sign?
No, not necessarily. Other locations may just have the name on the, on the location. This is a unique location, that it's in the arts and entertainment district, where we encourage the creative sign program, but on Peck Road in El Monte, it's just the standard pole sign.
Do we have any, any other signs in that area that are like this, protruding outside the building?
We do have at the MGM Theater, the, the visual display that changes, that juts out onto the right-of-way.
We've actually had a number of creative signs that have been approved. One was the Five Star Cinema, which is the one just mentioned. There's the Galleria Central Avenue Courts, the Lemley Lofts, the brand Wilson Coroner sign, Lexon Orange. The closest thing to related to this one would be the, and forgive me.
Bevmo?
Thank you, yes, that's exactly the same one. So that was actually approved by variances because it was before the creative sign ordinance, but it ultimately fulfills the intent of the creative sign program, or creative sign ordinance.
The Bevmo sign is all neon, it doesn't have the backlit vinyl.
It is a neon, I believe it does have a little bit of the backlit.
But this is mostly the backlit vinyl with a neon trim.
Correct.
And it's got the metal, which is nice, but it would have been nice if it, more if it was the neon and less if it was the backlit. You know, for instance, if the King Taco was a neon as well, or something like that, to, because I wouldn't, I'm not a big fan of the backlit vinyl signs, and this is mostly a backlit vinyl sign that's ringed in neon, so.
Correct.
It's my, my issue with it.
There is yellow neon also in the three-point crown.
That's good. Is it flash, or is it all static?
I believe it's static.
Static? And by the way, very glad King Taco's coming. I've never been to King Taco, so I've heard amazing things from our city manager, so the expectation, you know, is way high, so hopefully, sure it'll fulfill it from what I, from what I hear.
And staff met with the creative sign applicant actually a number of times with regards to discussing the intent of this creative sign ordinance, and this is ultimately what was presented by the applicant to move forward to City Council.
And what does staff, does staff have a recommendation? I mean, do you feel that it's all right as is? Would you prefer something a little different?
At this point in time, based on this particular submittal, staff recommends approval. Now, the, obviously, you as the review authority have every right to go ahead and request additional conditions such as greater neon tubing, or more, more to the sign.
Is, is the sign as depicted in the, as in page four of twelve, is that to scale?
I believe so, that's the, it's eighty-four inches, seven feet on thirty feet total.
Yes.
No, I see what the, I see, you know, I see the numbers eighty-four by sixty-two, but with regard to the facade and the...
Based on the dimensions that I see before me, again, I don't have a scale, however, when you take it, compare it to the other dimensions, such as the fourteen-foot dimension along the parapet line, it would be approximately seven feet, it would be half of the fourteen, so I believe it is to scale. And again, you have a twenty, just over twenty-three-foot grade difference between, I should say, between the grade and the bottom of the sign, so. And if you like, I can go back.
Okay.
It's on.
I'm going to make some comments, and I'm not going to get deeply into it. I don't want to poison the well for my clients, but I have some problems with the caricature in terms of political correctness, and I will not be voting for that caricature. Which is different than I'm not voting for the sign, or the size, or the colors, or the neon, but the caricature.
Let me ask the, I wanted to ask the applicants how, given what Councilmember Najarian just said, how they would feel about doing more like what Bevmo did, which is to have a neon sign that says King Taco without the logo, kind of going down.
Well, King Taco is a big fan of their logo. I think it would be, well, you sounded like you were kind of prejudiced against whatever you assume that character to be. What are your assumptions on that character?
I'm sorry, are you calling me prejudiced, ma'am?
Well, it sounded like it a little bit, I mean, you said you didn't...
I won't answer your question. If you have something to say, please say, but...
Well, I was trying to just...
I'm offended that you would accuse me of being prejudiced, in fact.
You, I apologize, I didn't mean it that way at all, but you did say something that you weren't fond of the character.
Caricature.
The caricature.
Yes, ma'am.
So I, I don't understand what, why you're not fond of that. That is his dad, it's a, I guess, a caricature of his father when he started the business in Mexico, probably in a taco stand, and it's been with them for all these years, and it's a very important thing to them. His father passed away last year, and so the, everything now has, his, his father, if you notice on the cups, if you've been in the restaurant, his father is depicted on that, so it is very important to them. They already have the King Taco on, on the building, as you see with the crown, and they just wanted to follow through with the rest of their logo and their name to do that. So I would think it would be a little redundant to put up a sign that just said King Taco. When we originally requested it, it was to be based on a creative sign, and I don't feel that that would fit the bill for doing that.
Could you identify yourself, please, for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Tish Shalampo, I'm with Absolute Sign.
Okay.
So I, I don't think we can change the character into a bunny if that's more acceptable, or, I, I don't know, he is what he is, he's, he's part of their logo, he...
Let me ask this, because my, my issue isn't so much the caricature, I mean, it is what it is. I just, for me, the intent of the creative signage was to do something that was really more of an artistic sign, that was, you know, that would bring excitement to the area. And I like that there's neon around this, but when I think about the, or look at the Bevmo sign up the block, it's, it's a lot more neon and a lot less of the more typical backlit vinyl. So what would it do, what would it add in expense to bring more neon in and maybe have less of the backlit? What is the material, is it, is it vinyl?
Well, the decoration on it is definitely, the, the body of it is aluminum, the faces are either acrylic or lexan, and then they're vinyl overlaid with either a digital print or, there's no light really passing through the black, very light, less light passing through the brown, and it, I...
What would that do financially? I mean, would it be possible, for instance, for the King Taco part to be in neon, or is that just...
Well, it wouldn't be, I, I don't think they would mind, it's a, it's a matter of, you know, manufacturing that, that's, you cannot put neon onto a lexan or acrylic surface. I don't think that's a UL way to, that they would accept that.
I don't want to sit here and design it, I just want to make sure that whatever's there is not a typical backlit vinyl sign, vinyl sign that just happens to have neon around it. Because that wasn't our, our intention was not to have a bunch of backlit vinyl signs, not that there's anything wrong with them, but that's a very typical kind of sign.
No, I, actually, we didn't look at it as a typical, it's, you know, it's very unique in its design and its shape. We do have the, the little metal flickering pieces that reflect the sunlight.
Which is nice.
We added the neon. I don't think technically it would be possible to add, like, the King Taco in a neon, only because then we would have to make an aluminum body, and then basically, the sign would be just a dark form with neon around it.
That's why I was asking, I, I don't know, I don't know much about sign manufacturing or anything about it, so that's why I was asking.
You wouldn't get all the detail if we were to go to an aluminum body, we would just get a frame in, in neon.
Okay. All right.
And I apologize if you've misconstrued anything I said, it just sounded like the character, it wasn't, I, I didn't understand what you were referring to about the character.
Okay, are there any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. So how far out, so what's, what are the dimensions in terms of it sticking out?
The, it sticks out sixty-two inches from the corner of the parapet, and it is about eighty-four inches in length.
Yes, and then originally, the, the sign projected over the rooftop, which we brought it down, so it is now...
It's almost like human size, kind of?
It's just, well, we're not over the, the roof cap, or even with the roof cap, that was one of the things they requested us, for us to do, because we had it up a little higher, and the crown was kind of sticking up above the roof line, so we brought it down in line with the roof line.
Well, I, it was not, I don't have a problem with the sign itself, it is the sign, I mean, the sign is the sign, that's what the company wants to, for its sign to be in, that's fine. I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud that, you know, allowing this kind of a sign on, on one business, if another business comes to downtown, they want this same kind of a sign, then, you know, there's not going to be any reason for us not to approve that sign either. So we may, I mean, I don't want to necessarily make a slippery slope kind of an argument, but we can end up with downtown with these signs sticking out like that, I mean, that's, that's what, what we had in plan.
May I ask, Villia, what is the boundaries of the area that allows for the creative signs? Because it's not the whole downtown, right? It's pretty restrictive, or am I wrong?
Creative signs are only permitted in the downtown specific plan area.
But is the whole downtown, then?
It would be the whole downtown, however, there are very limited contextual criteria, and those contextual criteria, and if you'd like, I can read off, would be, and again, they have to meet the, the required findings and the contextual criteria, that the sign be located, identified for a landmark architectural feature as identified in a figure four C of the downtown specific plan, and those are very limited landmark architectural feature locations within the downtown specific plan, or...
What does that mean? I'm sorry, what does that mean?
The downtown specific plan, I, let me, if you don't mind, I'll go get a cop, or a copy of it for you, but in the downtown specific plan, you have identified landmark features.
Okay.
And so in, only in those specific areas would a creative sign meet this particular criteria of A1, a contextual criteria of B.
What are, what are those areas?
So what are those areas? If it's a geographic area?
It would be, it would essentially be limiting to those areas such as, like, a creative corner, or a termination of a vista, or a specific symbolic location within the downtown specific plan area.
Those are, like, very nice words, and they sound very subjective, they're very subjective, you guys, the staff. Let me, let me finish. So you, when, when, when the next time this comes around, you can subjectively decide that it doesn't fit that criteria, and that's very worrisome. And again, I'm, I'm going to approve this, I'm okay with this, but what I don't want happening is for another business to come, to want this kind of thing, and then you just subjectively say, no, it doesn't, it's not at the end of some artistic vista, I mean, whatever that means, right? So what are the, what are the objective criteria that someone will have to meet in order to satisfy the requirements?
And those are actually called out in the map. So we refer to this figure, this, essentially, the map in the downtown specific plan, and there's specific points on there.
That's why I was asking where it was allowed, because it was my understanding, for instance, you couldn't do this up and down brand, where every fifteen feet, you have another storefront.
I think it's difficult to explain in a way.
That's, that's, that's my fear.
You have to see the map.
You have to see the map.
Yeah, so if you want, we can...
Because there are locations throughout the DSP, where, specific locations without, throughout the DSP where it would be allowed.
And this...
As opposed to the entire DSP, all the streets.
So Councilmember Friedman's question initially was correct.
Yeah.
It's not the entire area, it's areas within the downtown specific plan.
Oh, yes, yes.
They already exist, these areas already exist, they are objective, they are on paper, it's not like staff, every time there is an application, is going to recreate or create...
Just rubber stamped, it's automatically approved, correct, you are correct.
Correct, so it would have to essentially meet the contextual criteria set forth, either in, as identified in the map, or within the entertainment street frontage in the arts and entertainment district, or, these are the, the findings that have to be met, and if you cannot meet these findings, the review authority is not able to grant this creative sign.
And the findings are, I'm sorry?
If you take a look in your handout, under attachment two.
Attachment two.
We list...
Is it exhibit two or attachment?
Exhibit two.
Exhibit two, okay, yes.
We specifically list the criteria set forth in the Glendale Municipal Code, which would be the contextual criteria, the design criteria, and the design quality criteria. This is straight from the municipal code. Each creative sign application has to meet one of the standards in each of these three categories. And then the urban design studio staff reviews the sign on a case-by-case basis to review the contextual criteria, the design criteria, and the design quality, and then works with the sign applicant to go back and forth in terms of a dialogue to bring it to a point at least where staff can support it and bring it to you as the review authority.
So you're comfortable with the quality of the sign?
Per the urban design studio memo, yes.
And you, you feel that all of the findings have been met?
The urban design studio, yes, they feel that...
I say you, I mean you as a representative of the urban design studio.
I as a representative of the urban design studio, the urban design studio feels that they have met every particular criteria set forth in the required findings.
Let me ask a question. Is it staff that went to the applicant and said, hey, you're in a district, why don't you come up with a creative sign?
No.
The applicant came to you.
The applicant, King Taco came to our department, and specifically, in, in relation, you know, back and forth dialogue with Alan Castillo and myself, and the sign applicant Ms. Tish Shalampo, I'm going to mispronounce the last name. They came forward with a projecting sign, that original projecting sign was at the corner location, it was large, it did not have neon. In our back and forth dialogue, we worked, well, what can you do? What kind of sign is permitted by code? You can have a projecting sign, it can be twelve square feet, it could be at this location, can you work with that, except, you know, we, there was a back and forth dialogue, how can they meet code? They ultimately came forward and...
I got it, I got it, thank you.
Specifically said, and came forward with this.
Thank you, I understand.
So going back, I didn't finish, so let me finish now. I, I hope you understand what my frustration is, because I can see this coming, there are going to be other businesses who are going to ask for these kinds of signs, and then we are going to find ourselves in the position of wondering why, let's say, one is getting approved, the other isn't, and then we're going to have to deal with a, a business that wants to be in Glendale, or a business that's already in Glendale, or an individual that lives in Glendale, one way or another. So that's why, I mean, I, I understand your explanation, but this kind of thing, whether staff doesn't make the findings next time or makes the findings, is going to be under some scrutiny, from me, at least. That's it, thank you.
Okay.
Well, I'll just give a comment. You know, my, I was here when we approved the creative sign ordinance, and my reason for approving it was to bring some light and color and vibrancy, you know, more to the downtown, and specifically, we talked about the idea of the arts and entertainment district, which really, it's Maryland, is to get, to allow for Maryland to have fun and exciting signs, to give, give it more life and more reason for people to go there, because that's a street northern brand that has really struggled with, with, for the businesses, because it's not always easy to, to draw people there, so we thought having signs that were more interesting and brighter would bring more people, and Glendale does have a fairly restrictive sign ordinance, for good reason, they don't want to have a mishmash of signs that are large and competing against each other and to, to add to visual clutter in the downtown. So that's why I asked the question about location, because it was my recollection that when we did this, we specifically wanted to make sure that it was not going to be a case that we would have large and possibly garish signs every seven feet going down brand and every storefront. So it was not the intention to have a ton of them, but to have enough to, especially with those side streets like Broadway and Wilson, to draw people off-brand to find locations. And I, I think that the sign is acceptable, and King Taco's challenge is going to be that they are not on-brand, so they're going to have to get people to turn the corner and go up Broadway to go to their location, until they are such a huge destination that everyone just goes there because they know it's there. So I understand they're, they're wanting to have a sign like this that comes off the building, and I think having the neon will be a great improvement, because it does make it a more interesting sign. My hesitation was that I do find that a lot of the backlit vinyl signs to be very common, that it's what you typically see, particularly on roads that are more like Foothill Boulevard, where people are driving, they're, they're less pedestrian-oriented, more road-oriented, and it's, you know, every Ralph's, every Vons has a backlit vinyl sign, but this isn't, you know, it's a caricature, it's something a little different, it's not just words, so hopefully, it will do that job of being a visually interesting sign that's more than just backlit lettering, and, you know, the neon helps, so I think it's, you know, if the staff feels comfortable making the findings, then I, I put a lot of faith in them, so I'll vote for it.
So I'll move the item.
So, I'll move the item.
One second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Devine, Friedman?
Yes.
Barpedian? Sinanian?
Yes.
You're in Najarian?
No. Next item, please.
Next item is City Attorney regarding proposed ordinance amending sections of Chapter 4.16 of the Glendale Municipal Code relating to prevailing wage requirements, forays and ordinance for introduction.
Mr. Garcia?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Members of council, the item before you is an ordinance for introduction, which is essentially some house cleaning with respect to our, our own ordinances and resolutions. We have an ordinance and we have a resolution regarding the, the payment of prevailing wage. This ordinance will just clarify that we're paying for public works contracts and contracts for installation, repair, and maintenance, we're paying prevailing wage in accordance with state law, and in addition, we are exempting those projects for public works construction that are $25,000 or less, or, or contracts for installation, repair, and maintenance, and there's another one I'm forgetting, of $15,000 or less. So, with that, we're recommending that you introduce this ordinance, and then we'll bring it back for adoption on the 25th, I guess.
Why wouldn't we pay the prevailing wage even on the smaller projects?
Essentially, for the smaller project, those, especially the installation projects and maintenance, it's, it's difficult, if not impossible, to get any contractors to bid on them for that, that low dollar value, it's just, it's not feasible for them in that, usually you're talking about small repair projects, small installation projects, and we just, we've found that it's, and this is why the state adopted this as its policy, for those projects, to exempt those projects.
How much more would it add to the projects? How much more-
Cost?
Cost.
I, I don't have that information, I don't know if, if my staff does, but again, our issue is not necessarily one of cost, it's one of finding contractors willing to do the projects at that point.
Well, unless you increase the budget.
Okay, it's, and, but with all, the other issue is not just the cost, it's actually, there's a significant reporting requirement for contractors that are subject to prevailing wage, you have to, you have to register with the state, you have to, you have to identify all the wages that are paid to those workers on the state's website, it's much more than just actual dollar cost that's added to the value of contract, it's actually additional monitoring cost. And again, we're just, we've got some projects that are just on hold until we get this unveiled and get this on the books. And again, I, this, this, this model has been adopted by the state legislature as, as satisfactory to comply with the intent of the prevailing wage laws. So, we feel like it's, it's, it's acceptable to the state and, and the, the trade associations who supported this particular legislation, SB 7.
Okay.
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Thank you, that concludes our business, except for recessing to closed session, and therefore, we will recess to closed session.